I'd like to ask our attorney, Mr. Albright, to lead us in a phrase of regent. And I'd like to ask the city manager, Jim Anderson, to sit up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. If you're having a follow, we thank you for this wonderful country we live in and this city that we're proud to say, uh, city of Port St. Joe. We ask you to be with us throughout the week, lead us and guide us, be with us through the Memorial Holiday Weekend. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, now calling this meeting with the Port St. Joe City Commission's order. Uh, want to welcome everybody in the crowd. Uh, first thing we have to do is we have two, uh, consent agendas. One was a regular meeting and one was a special meeting. Uh, we just need approval for those.
Motion approved.
We have a motion. Have a second.
A second.
Have a second.
There's a handout on your desk. There's a scribbler's error. It is corrected and the handout on right here is just, it was a motion and part of it did not get on there, but that's just the rest of it.
Accept the friendly amendment.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion still stands with a second. Any opposition? Motion carries five up.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, building department update. Anyone from the building department here today? Jim, have you talked with them lately?
Yes, sir, I have. In the last meeting, it was discussed, Mayor, to give you a handout sheet in there as to activity that has taken place since the last meeting to today. So take a look at that. If you would like to see a different format or something different, Mayor, we'll definitely get it to them. I think Kelly is here if you do have a question, Mayor.
All right. Anyone have a question for building department? All right, thank you, Kelly. All right, Port St. Joe, meeting of the firm with update. We have one.
No updates at this time.
No update. All right, Mr. Attorney, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the first issue is ordinance 555, voluntary annexation of parcel number 04272-000R. Ultimately, um, I would ask the commission for a motion for the first reading, but before that, um, I would note that the county has asked for a workshop, which, uh, the commission may want to address, and that I see Mr. Ray Greer, representative, uh, from the landowner of this parcel in the audience as well. The commission has any interest in speaking with him.
Okay. Wow, okay. I was on impression with the, uh, actual, not the annexation, but the project that was supposed to go on that property was the main question from the county, is that not the, they're concerned about annexation too?
I think it's one in the same.
So we need to, maybe we go ahead now on approval, a date for the workshop?
Yes, if the commission so inclined.
What was the date, Jim, that we discussed?
Yes, sir, we had two different options on there, the 29th or the 30th, and talking with Commissioner Lowry, I believe he had a conflict on the 29th. Uh, so I believe the probably something they asked would be for the 30th, if the county's okay with the 30th.
Thursday, the 30th?
Yes, sir. Initially, they were talking about at four o'clock. Um, I'm not sure if that's the time you want to try again the next day, but initially it was for the 29th is what the county asked at four o'clock, but maybe you asked for the 30th at four o'clock.
I'm, I'm fine with either date. I think that we just need to go ahead and approve the workshop. Uh, let's do the workshop. You know, I'm not always a board of workshop, but at the same time, I'm looking out for the best interest of the city and not, um, holding back our plans on annexing this project and approving. Uh, and I know I'm not speaking for the whole city when I say that, so, um, I'm fine with the 30th.
I will call.
And I've just got a couple of comments. Uh, I'm fine with the workshop. I think that we need to hear if there are citizens that are concerned about it. Um, but I don't think that we should stop. We can forward. We can go ahead and do the first readings. That doesn't commit us to anything. We can always cancel the second reading. Otherwise, we have to re-advertise the first reading again. Uh, so I'm not opposed to going ahead with the first reading at this time.
Yes, it definitely don't hold us to nothing.
It won't hold us to anything.
Is that in the form?
So I'll, I'll make a motion to have the first reading on ordinance 555.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Hoffel. Any objection? No objection?
Looking for one?
Means it passed.
With that, with that motion passing, um, thank the reading of ordinance 555. Ordinance number 555, an ordinance providing for the voluntary annexation of parcel ID number 04272-000R, providing a legal description of the lands to be annexed, more specifically described in this ordinance as permitted by the property owner per se of the section 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for the redefining of city boundaries to include said lands, making certain findings, providing per se viability and providing for an effective Next, before the commission's consideration is ordinance number 556, small-scale plan amendment to parcel, uh, 04272-000R. Again, um, if the commission so inclined for a first reading and ask for a motion.
Mayor, if it's all right, can we hear from, from the developers of that and kind of let us know what, what this is so for the public's benefit and what we're voting on?
Sure. Any developer out there needs to come up, says your name and writes your name in the book there.
Good afternoon. I'm Ray Greer. My address is 2910 Cary Porch Parkway, Tallahassee, Florida. Now I'm applicant's representative. What we're proposing on this, the 9.09 acres, is to annex it into the city. It is to change the future land use, do a small-scale land use change and rezoning. What we're asking for is to go to, um, R4 for the residential, R4 for both the land use and the zoning. Uh, the R4 land use category in the city of Port St. Joe is only allowed in one area. It is the area that is right there adjacent to the site is the area, um, of course, west of the bridge and the Highland View area. And why we have chose this land use category or the none category, both of them, to go to R4, R4 does allow for 30 units an acre. It allows up to 60 foot in height. The, um, applicant, what they want to do is to build a, uh, apartment complex there. They're looking at about 70 units at four stories. And so density-wise, um, that calculates about 18 units an acre, which your other land use category, you have a 30 units an acre, and then your next land use category is 15. And so we do need the R4 to get the higher density. Uh, the height is not an issue and you are looking at only going four stories. Uh, the site is only nine acres, so between, you know, 170 units would be max on the side, based on, you know, in case of stormwater and parking the spaces.
How big a parking lot you want here?
Well, I have to have enough parking, and we've been discussing the other parking issue with the city. And enough parking, it's comes out to me as two parking places, two parking spots per unit. And we're trying to, you know, they're working on now, you know, naturally doing the layout, having architecture design done and trying to work out the parking, uh, trying to work out the overall development, but having aesthetically pleasing, putting the parking in the rear, trying to work it in, so it's just very nice apartment complex. It is, you know, it's geared toward, you know, more workforce, forest housing. It is not, um, you know, seasonal rental. I've heard different stories going around. It isn't short-term. Um, it will be, you know, long-term rental and more forested, more walkable housing.
So you're looking at about 360 parking spaces, something in that neighborhood?
Yes. Quite, not quite that anymore.
So anticipating what the county workshop is going to comprise of, I think the county is most concerned about the density. If you're only asking for three units above an R3, is there any way, Mr. Attorney, that we can call it an R3 and get a, a PD RV exception to add three units, or could we call it an R4 with certain restrictions on the R4? Is there any way to change that?
It's the land use category then.
Right.
It's, yeah, it's set at 15. Therefore, we'd have to amend the land use category. We'd have to have large-scale land use amendment to amend that.
You can't change it per parcel?
No. But what we could do, and, you know, the city's done this in other parcels, they have put a, a limitation for, that applies to that parcel, um, for that category.
Because it's not in the city yet, I'm thinking that might be appropriate, that if we bring it in, that's part of the restrictions on the annexation.
Yes. You can limit the density and you can limit height.
Sorry for complicating your day.
Well, I think at this point, a small-scale plan amendment per se of Florida statutes, only thing that you can consider is the whether around that area is similar. As far as the development itself, I think it'll be a time for the developer to come back and seek approval for the commission, and at that point, that approval can be based off contingencies if the commission so inclined to grant approval of any sort. So I don't think we're ripe for addressing that issue just yet. I think Mr. Greer or somebody from the owner's representatives will come back, um, based on development order type issues.
And which that would include traffic and everything else too would be included in those analysis for the development order?
Yeah, so at the end of the day, some, whatever they bring back, we don't have to ultimately approve.
Right, and I'm, I'm just saying.
Probably my main, probably my main concern is traffic.
Yes, sir.
Turning lanes and such.
If we allowed an R4 and the deal falls through and it doesn't get built there, where we just allow 270 units on that same parcel, um, that's why I'm asking if there could be some restrictions. Not that I'd be opposed to that either, but it's something to think about. So I'm still fine with the first reading. Mayor, if anyone else can add my questions?
Anybody else in the public want to speak on it? If you do, come on up.
Mayor, I'll make a motion for a first reading on ordinance 556.
Second motion? We have a second. Call the favor, say aye. I'll just ask you five please.
Ordinance number 556, an ordinance permitting the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida, by and through procedures required for small-scale map amendments pursuant to authority, United States Statute Section 163.3187, specifically changing parcel ID number 04272-000R from public use to residential R4, providing for the amendment of the zoning map of the city of Port St. Joe, providing for appeal of any conflicting ordinances, providing for generability, providing for an effective date.
That all you have, Porch?
One other issue, Mayor, is the boat dockage agreement update. Um, I've been informed that a representative of the St. Joe company has informed Mr. Anderson that he would like to come down for the June 4th commission meeting and discuss this with the commission. With that being said, I would suggest to the commission, um, tabling this issue, getting with, uh, me or Mr. Anderson, uh, individually, chronically individually, to redefine the city's ask in anticipation of this June 4th meeting, um, so that the commission has a clear, um, path of what they want from the St. Joe company.
Make a motion on that?
I will support the idea, and I would like to add, based on what I have seen and, uh, and where we were at our last gathering, I believe it's fair to say that the St. Joe Corporation agrees with me in that this did not start off correctly. Um, I think we were not happy with, uh, and no disrespect to our legal staff, but when the attorneys got involved with language and leases, uh, that's really not the signs of a true partnership. I believe that both parties, the city of St. Joe and the St. Joe Resort LLC, are willing to partnership in, uh, the project that I, I hope is forthcoming in the future. I believe it's fair to say that, uh, we can work this out. Now I will state that, uh, both parties are, I believe, in agreement that Clifford Sam's Park will always remain property of the St. Joe, the city of St. Joe, and First Street and Marina Drive will always be owned and managed by the city of St. Joe. So that in itself is, uh, far from, I think, where we may have been traveling, uh, in the past. So I'm in full support of, of hearing from them directly at the next meeting, and I support tabling it, and I'll make that motion at this time.
All right, have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Any opposition to the motion? Anything from the public? Motion carries. I vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have to remind you. I'm just back.
Jim?
Yes, sir, Mayor. First item, July 4th. The July 4th holiday is fast approaching. Uh, currently, we are scheduled to have fireworks on July 4th. Uh, we're going to make, need to make a little change this year with the property being utilized by East Ship Building. The property where we generally shoot the fireworks off is going to be unavailable. Uh, staff has looked at it. On, on New Year's Eve, we usually do it down at the boat ramp, but you're going to have a lot of congestion. Suggestion will be to use down Clifford Sam's Park. We can block it off at the entrance there, and we can utilize that area there to shoot the fireworks, because you don't have any activity at Marina right now, so staff recommendation will is do the fireworks from Clifford Sam's.
So. All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second, Commissioner Lowry. Any opposition to the motion?
I don't have opposition, but I think we need to make sure that, uh, we had discussed that we need to reach out to the, the boats that are, are part there and make sure everybody's in agreement on what time we're going to do the fireworks so that interrupts your business.
Sure. Sure. Uh, y'all just coordinate that with Jim. We'll make sure we don't do anything interfere with y'all's work. Uh. Motion passes. Favour.
Uh, the event scheduled for July 4th, I've talked with Commissioner Quinn. He has all this paperwork in. He's moving forward with the street dance on July the 4th, so all everything is in place for that. I also reached out to Ms. Cora Curtis yesterday to see if she had the paperwork, uh, for the other event that's been, uh, proposed. We haven't seen any paperwork at this point in time, so I'm not sure what the status is, but I did ask Ms. Curtis that if she would please get it to us by the end of close of business, thanks Friday, so we could have it in the agenda for you to look at, because I know Mr. Langston wanted to look at it at this board, but I have not received it. RFQ 2019-81, this is for the grant services. We did open up bids on Friday, uh, so we did receive two, so we're going through those. So what we'd like today is, hey, we'll bring it back to you in two weeks on there and give you a recommendation, but yes, we did get two bids that, uh, we think can be of a benefit to the city.
Jim, what was your individuals' businesses?
Uh, individual, one is an individual, one is actually a business out of DC. We're going through the, we haven't had chance to.
All right, we have a motion. Have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All right. Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries. Favour.
Next item is the FEMA damage assessment report. We did have a meeting yesterday with FEMA. FEMA has been going through and helping the city out doing damage assessments. Uh, preliminary, the numbers came back yesterday. They're showing 102 structures that had, uh, substantial damage. We're taking those, the numbers they gave to us, now we go back and look at what we have in the books for it. FEMA permits, permits has been pulled, so we're working back through FEMA for what the information they gave to us to figure out the next step. Once that is determined, we have to send out a letter to each one of those folks that is on that list, that 102, if it still remains at 102 on there, so that is going to be short coming, then probably the next 30 to 45 days, we have to send out a letter.
Jim, do we know is there any money coming, uh, from the legislature to help maybe demolish some of these homes that people have abandoned after the storm?
Good question. I did ask that same question myself yesterday. Uh, to my understanding is there is some mitigation money that should be flowing down from the federal government to the state level, possibly through Marshall's office. What we need to do is we got to work it back through. We got to determine first how many that we're looking at, and then we need to work it back through the local, uh, county level back to the state to see how that money's going to come through and see if we qualify for some of that money. But yes, we do anticipate there should be some money there to help out with those submissions, because we're going to need it. If you start looking at the price tag on, I don't know how many we're still going to clear down possibly, but we do have some that folks have just, have just left down and left on. Any other questions on that? The next item is the Nerd of Stormwater Grant. This is something we've been working on for a couple of years. This money is flowing down from the Water Management District down to DEP. Uh, we have, uh, been given, uh, to go ahead with the grant. Looks like we have been approved. Talked with the Water Management District the other day, so they're working. We're going to be the sole grantor. The first thing is the agreement's going to be from the Water Management District to DEP. Uh, roughly the grant is $906,000 for stormwater improvements in the city, so that'll be forthcoming. You should be in the next couple of weeks, you'll have a grant, um, for you to consider approval on.
When are the engineers going to start on the master plan?
Uh, as soon as you get an agreement on there, then we need to come back and decide exactly what stages of those move forward. We just had a meeting the other day, uh, just to find out the mechanics, but first we got to have the group it down from DEP and then Water Management District.
I anticipate a lot of the grant money's coming down will help with stormwater, so we have a clear picture of what we need to work on, uh.
Yes, sir. Should be a master plan and their, and the focal point is for clean water. They want to improve the water quality going into St. Joe, but.
Does that have anything to do with the 10th Street area?
It does deal with the, um, Forest Park basin there. You have that huge basin, so all that that flows into the bay, yes, sir, all that is part of that.
That's not part of the, the other grant, the, the, what are management district?
This one is flowing, this probably is the same one.
To improve the 10th Street park area?
Yes, sir. That is, that basin there is part of it in there. That's the main focus of one is all that water that's coming down, um, through to the bay. They want to make, they want to clean that up as best they can.
Okay.
Uh, the last time we had an old visit at the community garden, Commissioner Langston wanted to talk to you today about?
Yeah, I had a meeting with the ladies at the, um, garden club, and they wanted to, the board to assure them, they wanted to, um, put the garden under their umbrella, and they wanted the board to assure them that, um, they would at least give, um, five years of support for the insurance and, um, and the budget, the small budget that they have. I told them I would bring it to you and, um, see what the budget guys think about it. So, um, we'll have to, um, is that a motion?
I mean, it's almost budget time, and I'd go under the non-governmental funding, wouldn't it? Or could you apply it to Parks and Rec? Mike, what, what would you be your recommendation?
Well, historically, we had it under Parks and Rec, and we absorbed those costs when it was done before, um, so this would be new. I would think it would need to be separated if, if we're the, uh, Garden Club.
Because it's new. I mean, I figured we'd fund it like we need the main society. They're providing a service to the city by operating the community garden, same as the main society's providing a service.
I'm at full support of setting up a budget, however it works out, uh, both for the budget people, Mike and the city, but yeah, I'm at full support of creating a, a fund and adding that to the city budget.
I can add it as a non-departmental in the city budget, and we can tackle it through the budget process as we go through.
So I, I'll make a motion that we, we decide today to fund, uh, the garden club to determine whatever insurance costs and any additional we may want to add to help with the project for the next five years.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. We have a second. Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes. Favour.
I just want to say, um, thank you, guys. Um, they're really working hard on this project. We're excited about it, and, um, knowing that the city and, um, the county, um, of course, Commissioner Quinn does a lot to, to help out with it, and knowing that we're behind in it gives an extra boost, so, um, I really appreciate it, guys.
On the new business, the first item we had was a city Facebook page, Commissioner Hoffel wanted to talk to you today about.
Well, it's funny how slow government works. I found that out on something as simple as creating a Facebook page. Uh, so I was excited to hear that we actually do have someone in-house that is willing to create the Facebook page. I thought it was kind of interesting that we only found this person after I talked about paying somebody money to do it. But hey, I, kudos to the staff for finding the person, and, uh, I, I don't know if we need a motion or what we need to make it happen, but I think that we are way behind times on how we announce information to our city. Um, when we had that water line busted the other night, in the middle of the night, um, I was finding out that we had an issue through social media, so, um, let, let's just get this started and, and get this person signed up to do it. I would suggest that it is for information only. It's not something that we, we receive 400 comments about how terrible a job we're doing, so we'll restrict it in that, in that department. Um, so what do we need to do, Jim, to get it?
Just wish to the board, we'll.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city employee to start it up, uh, with the restrictions that we so deem.
I'll second it. Information only?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I, I'm not on Facebook, but I'm on Facebook, as I usually say.
My only question is what were the charges?
It's pretty much free.
Yeah, it is pretty much out. There may be a start fee, I don't know. I don't know if Facebook pays.
No, it's free to the city. That's why it's so aggravating, I guess, to not see it done quick, quick enough. I would su- support the idea. I'm a very strong advocate for if you task an employee with an additional duty that they're not normally doing, that you compensate the employee at that time. Um, I think that might get part of the motion that, that we, uh, allow the city staff, the city manager, to, to coordinate that with the employee and, uh, something that's fair and reasonable, because it's time. Um, and I know that most of our employees are, are already working, uh, as hard as they can. There's not a lot of free time out there. So I would, I think part of the motion would be allow to compensate the employee with a, with a fair amount.
I'm fine with that. I'll second. And my only other question then is the employees, they're getting paid to do this during their regular normal hours, or they're doing it after hours?
They're sure to be during the course.
Well, unless an announcement comes up.
They're staying to be there.
Yeah, but you gotta, you gotta realize that the last time we needed it was two o'clock in the morning when our line was busted, so they're, they're taking on that agreement.
What we have is we'll have one primary person that stays during the day. The person that comes in that has to do those announcements, the emergency announcements that have to be now, will also give them access to that maintenance.
That's all I have. Any further discussions? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries. Favour.
Uh, the next item was the Juneteenth fee waiver request. I told Commissioner Langston, I've also talked to Mr. Chester Davis. There was a generous donation that was given to the Juneteenth, uh, celebration. That fee's been paid, so that's been paid. Thank you, Jim. Thank you. The last item we had was the League of Cities Annual Conference. Commissioner Ashburn wanted to talk to you today about it.
Yeah, actually, not quite, but we do need to remind everybody that that is coming up. Trying to find the dates again. Uh, August 15th through the 17th, at the San Orlando World Center. Uh, like note, if y'all are interested in attending, it's a lot of information. Eric, you should try to make it if you can. I need to talk to Jim for you. I will. But, uh, but on another note, I was just appointed to the Board of Directors for the Northwest Florida League of Cities, and I like to ask for a little bit of leeway when I have to travel if it's a little further than usual. I'll always try to stay at a choice hotel at employee rate, uh, but it's an asset to the city to have those connections and be with the league. So that's all that I have, Jim.
Congratulations, old man.
Thank you.
Great. The only other thing I have, if I'm not here today to work at the plant, if I could, if we could go down to Surface Water Plant, there is one pump that is out at the water plant. I didn't give you a copy of today. It's a handout fantasy. Uh, it would be a sole source, but it is a pump that we do need to replace at the water plant. The total cost for that would be, under the sole source, would be $15,866.
Is this within the budget?
Yes, sir, we do have it.
Motion approved.
We have a motion? We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussions? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries. Favour. I say, Jim? John?
Mayor, just a real quick update for the board.
Mayor, just a real quick update for the board. Eleven of the 12 control panels for the sewer system have been installed, with the 12th to be installed by Thursday, so that will complete that project that we started several months ago. We still do, however, have three stations that Mr. Smallwood and I will be looking at soon and bringing you guys back the information, and has to have more extensive work done to it. So I just didn't want that to fall off later.
And where are we on the 7th Street Alleyway project?
It's still in Q. C.
Okay. Moving to the top.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions, John?
Yes. Come on, come on. There you go. You don't know how often I get flushed out about people coming up, stating their name, signing that book.
Chester Davis, where did you have to be? I'm here and representing Mr. Foxwood. He had told me to ask Mr. City Manager about the waterway of the sewer drainage around his house and that would you bring that up to?
Mr. Foxwood and I spoke about that yesterday and Chester, I did bring it up to the mayor prior to the meeting, so we're still working with that. It's part to do with what Mr. Smallwood's going to be doing here soon for the city with the stormwater plan, so everything there is connected to that.
Thank you.
I think, man, we talked about it also.
We did, yes, sir.
All right. Mike?
Public Works is working on the Stackhouse. We're tentatively set to open the Stackhouse on June the 3rd for June and July for the kids for the summer program. We're still working insurance and FEMA. We've had two more projects that have gone through the FEMA process and had been costed, so we're still moving along with both of those projects, trying to make sure we recover the dollars that are due us for the storm. Other than that, our financials are in good shape.
That's a good Facebook post, June 3rd, Stackhouse.
There you go.
And we already hired the teenagers that...
No, I think this Friday, I think, is the deadline. Is that correct, for the Friday?
24.
The 24th, this Friday?
Yes, we're all receiving.
Oh, okay, so we're getting them. That's good.
Any other questions, Mike?
Kevin? Pond's looking well, so the bacteria's working well. The pumps that we ordered, that y'all approved, have been, I mean, pumps y'all approved have been ordered. We haven't gotten yet a few pumps or tanks, but we expect them kind of like any minute so we can keep all our water stuff back up to them. We're not going to discharge next month, so because we have enough room and I'm going to take a little time off next month, so I'm just going to take a whole month and do maintenance and stuff like that, try to get some of the hurricane mitigation stuff out of the way. And then we'll kick it back up into June, first to start pumping out, then we'll straighten it again.
Kevin, has the biological dredging made an effect yet that we've lost solids?
We've lost some solids. We're going to do a full, the whole testing part next month where we get a lot more data next month, and all that data goes to DEP in July, so we'll get full scope of it.
Are you testing quarterly?
Well, we initially started the test quarterly, but I got off track. I just didn't have the hands to do it quarterly. Our minimum standard's going to be the biannual. So we've done water testing and stuff, but we haven't done sludge testing yet, which is what we're going to do next month.
It's a lot of money. Just want to make sure that we're losing inches off the bottom.
Yeah. They've actually been hitting a lot harder because we saw some algae pop up, so they've done a lot more work on the pond than, the best they're contract, you know, the algae pops up. They got it within their farmers, they've been doing that.
Anybody else have any questions for Kevin?
Hi, Kevin.
Steve, who's your name?
Yes, sir. Fallsdale Avenue contractors hoping to get that this week, that's in between Capital City and Frank Pate Park by 10 scores. I imagine a day or two they'll have that wrapped up, but the idea is trying to get them for the holiday and fishing season kicks off and all that, so you may see that. Also, they're going to try to kick some patches around town that Mr. Grantley needs, so hopefully get all those knocked out this week. Frank Pate Park, which includes the gazebo and picnic shelter, damaged during the storm later this week, we should be ready to advertise that, so we'll let you know the dates, but probably sometime in June, June we'll receive bids on that. But Griffin Lake, I think we got somebody trying to figure out a solution on that. If you remember, we opened bids and it was astronomical, but trying to come up with a workable solution, so I hope next meeting maybe we'll have something. I'm not sure. That's all I have.
Kevin, any questions?
What's the latest on the trail?
The trail, we had, we had a call with the state last week with the grant folks at the state and came up with a new schedule and what they need from us and when they need it, that kind of thing. So it's almost like it's starting over, even though it's not starting over, but it's just kicking off is probably a better way to say that.
Yeah, I think it's starting over.
It is in a lot of ways. You know, we had a plan and then obviously the storm damaged quite a bit of that, and so we reset on what the plan was, and so now the state has gotten on board with what we want to do, and so now we're kicking it off. So that's what we've been doing the last couple of months, is trying to get them on board with what we need to do today versus what we needed in September and all that. So anyway, it's kicking off and you'll see some movement on that as the year goes on, starting next month and in July, we'll probably be ready to start getting some of that built.
Hey, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I guess everybody can see Richie's report he turned in. The only thing I'm having calls on is high grass and abandoned cars from the storm. People have just left their cars and are not trying to move them. I've had a couple of calls about seeing what we could do, so Jim, you could direct Richie to check on them, abandoned cars. Appreciate it. All right, Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything on the agenda. I would just like to note this is the last week of school, so there'll be a lot of kids out and about and doing whatever they do during the summer. During the summer, we offer a security check program, try to get the word out, anybody that's going on vacation, if they'd like for us to keep an extra aisle in their home or their business, we'll be glad to do that. They just need to call our main number, 227-1414. Our secretary will take down all the information and we'll keep an extra aisle on their residence. That's all I got.
Any questions for the chief?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Michelle.
Yes, sir, I don't have any feeling.
All right. At this time, we will go to the citizens to be heard. Anyone in the public want to be heard? If you do, get your hands way up, stand up and come on if you do. Come on up.
We need to rock and roll. Marvin Avenue, I kind of missed out on the, I'm talking to Stormwater, we all talked about Stormwater, Grant, I don't know if they, did y'all ask the public for any comment, but I've got a couple of questions on that for Mr. Anderson, if I might. You said you've already met with the, what does this grant consist of that they've already met with the DEP and the water management? Could you explain that too?
Let's see, if we turn over to the page on there, Mr. Grant, let's see, we're going to, it actually breaks it down, page 48. There's several different elements to it. We have not got the full grant for approval for the board yet. What we have is preliminary, these are the items that it says and we'll cover on there. There's $50,000 for our stormwater master plan, $60,980 for engineering and design, $614,000 for stormwater, for construction, $50,000 for stormwater monitoring, and $54,250 for local sponsor oversight administration supervision. We should be getting that grant in the next couple of weeks when it gets down, once it gets signed by our management district in a couple of quarters.
Sure. Appreciate it. So what kind of work y'all, or y'all consider on that, that stormwater basin, what do y'all consider doing for that, the canal, y'all, you still have all that covered, part of that, have you already got your mind made up?
No final, no final decision's been made at this point, Mr. Grant, but the premise of the grant is for clean water. So with that, at some point, what we might have to do is we might have to come back in with this grant.
So they're telling y'all, the actual do of that is go out and clean up the bay?
That is the whole premise of the grant is clean water.
Ah, in respect to what you're saying, I just want to caution y'all to be real careful about the building with that, with that stormwater ditch. And I, you know, I'm going to say again, that's the only, that canal is the only thing that saved a lot of us residents the misery due to my, we was fortunate, I was fortunate, I spoke on it before, come up to my back, in my back door and received it out. Had that been covered up due to your plans, I would have got flooded out as much as anybody else. And they, doctors have been pictured, that's a, that's a storm basin through there. When you go to messing with it, you create problems. I just want to caution y'all about that, that's the reason I'm up here. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Come on up.
Chester Davis, Kansas City Avenue key. This year at the Juneteenth celebration, we're going to be focusing our attention on Mr. Keon Magners, 50 children that he's going to be training. We've already got donations to fund that and what we're looking for, there was some individual support, and I thank you for your already individual support from the city based upon what we're trying to do with those kids. We're also asking that the police department, the chief, you know, come out and help us out by setting up a booth or, you know, helping us out with a little security or telling us what we might be able to do, simply because of the crowd we're expecting this year because we want to have more children involved. We're centered around the movie Race, which was done by our past history Jesse Owens. So we're going to be doing that for the city and we really need your support on that simply because we are expecting a lot of children. The other thing is the bathrooms and the AC again, which I talked to Commissioner Laxton about. We want to kind of make sure that they're running because the last time what we did, they checked it that night, it looked real good, but midway that next day, it was hot. So we want to try to accommodate because we don't want to move from one place to another in order for that to happen. And the last thing is that we are getting a little bit more traffic in the areas over there, and I want to talk to the chief about that some, because some of the traffic over there is getting a little bit, you know, on our nerves, so. But other than that, we thank you for your support and ask that you come out and be a part of Juneteenth, because whatever we're doing, we're doing it for the entire city for Juneteenth. Thank you.
You anyone else in the public? Come on up.
Name Marvin Davis, got to know to everyone. The only question I have was from the citizen over in Norfolk-St. John, I'm pretty sure over on this side of town, also a bit concerned about the time of this meeting. I don't know if y'all heard of it, can we go to the afternoon because lots of citizens, they would love to attend this particular meeting, but because of their employment, they are unable. So I wonder, have y'all considered maybe hosting it in afternoon, like 6 o'clock in afternoon?
Go ahead, true.
Go ahead, make sure.
We have, to answer your question.
Yes, sir.
We have talked about it. We've talked about why we changed it. What I have said in the past and continue to say is I am probably the most flexible of the, those sitting up here. So I wanted to allow the others that are not as flexible to have more to say about it than myself. With that said, I did have someone come and speak to me prior to the meeting and thanked me for having meetings at 12 o'clock. It's a, it's a no-win. What we should be striving to do, and I encourage everyone to do, is hold the meetings at times that we fill the room with people. And we have to figure out what is the best time, not based on our schedule. So I am in support of going to whatever direction encourages our people to be here and attend the meetings. So first, let me thank you for weighing in on that, because there's times when we really don't know what the best thing to do is until we hear from the people that should be directing us to do those things. I had thrown out the idea of splitting it to where we offer some 12 o'clock and then we offer some 6 o'clock meeting, and I still like that idea. Now, you may do it for six months and realize that the attendance dropped. If the attendance drops, then in my mind, we're not at the right time. I think it's fair to say that at the 12 o'clock meetings, the attendance is pretty much, in my mind, been the same as it would have been at 6 o'clock. I do find it kind of ironic that there's been people that said they don't like the 12 o'clock meetings, they can't attend them, but they're at the meeting complaining about the 12 o'clock meeting. So it complicates things. I would encourage the commissioners today, I think it's time to take action and decide what we want to do, because you're not the only one that has spoken in disagreement to the 12 o'clock. So I would hope that someone would take the opportunity to maybe suggest a different timeframe. I can meet pretty much any time, so I'm focusing on what is the best time to meet where the majority of our people come to.
Yeah, I want, one thing I would mention too, that you didn't mention is I've spoken to staff and it's when they work five days a week and then we have a 6 o'clock meeting, two days out of a month, and possibly a workshop or something, that puts them over and having to stay till seven or eight o'clock if we have a night meeting. So it affects staff as well. But 12 o'clock's very flexible for me, but if anybody else wants to voice their opinion as well?
Yeah, I'm flexible. I prefer them in the afternoons. However, if, I think the give and take was, we're not doing how the county does it at nine a.m. when everyone starts their work day. We're doing it at noon, when if you do work a nine to five, you potentially have an opportunity at a lunch break. So I felt like if we're going to do it in the mornings, that this would be the best time, either we're going to be doing it or in the evening. I'd really be interested to see a non-binding referendum on the next ballot and just see what the people think.
Well, or another idea is we just approved to initiate a Facebook page, a social media page, and I know that there are ways that you can set up an actual survey on that site. If we could open it, you know, would you support us doing a survey on the social media and holding off until we at least hear from, you know, a lot of times I come to these meetings and I think I have the answer, it's clear in my mind, and then I hear from people and realize, well, what's unclear after all, wasn't? And that's why I'm kind of cautious about this time to the meeting. I may think that the best thing to do is offer a 12 o'clock and offer a 6 o'clock, and we may hear from the people that disagree with both of us, you know, so I think it would be a good idea to just set it up and we'll find out just how good our new Facebook person is, you know? They may be like, oh, no, but it's not that, it's not that difficult, and I think maybe we should entertain that idea.
Yeah, I think it'd be good, and like I said, I support you guys either way. I'm newly back to St. John, originally from St. John. Just moved back about two years ago, arguably two years, so just not retired from, from teaching, from over in Bay County. So I'm here, whatever you guys need to support, either 12 o'clock or in afternoon, but I just wanted to post some of the sentiments of the citizens. We'll represent you guys and bring it up. The other thing I want to just bring up too is the, I'm unclear on when the last pickup day for the debris. Has that date been set?
It's already passed.
It's already passed? Okay, because I thought I heard it might say it was extended, so good, okay, it's, okay, good. And the other thing too is what is the city plan, if any, for homes, those vacant lots that have been cleared and everything, of the anti-kind program, we're going to be coming up and consider to help some of the families rebuild.
I'll see. I actually did speak to the county administrator today and he says there's a lot of ship and sale money, and what the county's going to advocate for is buying down loan amounts, and this is something that I think is coming before the board at their next meeting, similar to the neighborhood that was built, what's the street? Bridgeport, similar to that. Well, you can build a house and they'll either guarantee the loan or buy it down and make it more affordable. So I know that that's in the works for the county. They get all the money. They get the sale money, the ship money. We ask for it, but they haven't. So that is coming down the pipes.
And two, to help the individuals, and this is all proposed, but probably to help individuals that do currently have lots, that lost their house, and to tear them down, so I think that's going to probably be the proposition. So we'll know more probably in the next month.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim, back into the city picking up limbs. Are we back to doing that?
We're going to get back into that business. We haven't started back yet, I don't think, Mr. Grant.
No, sir, we haven't.
We are, we're going to get back into it and field that forward until the new contracts are completed.
Yeah, so we will be picking up limbs and stuff, you know, it might be heavy debris with the normal limbs that we pick up. We'll be picking them up until the new trash company comes on board in October, then they'll start picking them up. they'll, they'll start picking them up.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Could I say one more thing about what I said, what he said about meeting time? Just clear it up. Come on up. I'm being generous. I appreciate it, man. I just want to make the statement about it was brought up pretty good that people complaining at meetings. The reason I, I ain't been complaining the last three times. The reason I'm here today is because I'm on vacation. And actually, the other times, my, my lead choose it swung around and I might be able to make meetings half, half the Tuesday out of the year. Now, to clear this up, it, we all need to know to start with why the meeting times were changed.
I think we all know.
No, no, that's never been brought up today.
Yeah, it's been brought up before.
It's been brought up before.
Well, what happened, it was a little bait and switch and you never went back to the bait again. You say, well, the reason why is because him coaching basketball is when y'all went back. And you asked that question at a meeting previous. I said that, I'm going to clear it one more time. So, why is it being brought up again? We all know. Mr. Bezette, may I have, even I spoke to you a week ago. And nobody's trying to hide anything about why we changed. What did you tell me? You would rather have it six o'clock. You fixed me the next day. I mean, you even told me that two weeks ago. I'm going to quote what you said. All right. You can't talk to people in the audience. You're talking to us. I apologize, but I just want to clear that up. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Anyone else? Seeing no hands, I'll go to the commissioners. Commissioner Langston, you first.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that came out and supported me on the last election. I appreciate it. I also like to thank my opponent, Mr. Tuskell. And John, it's a couple of things. The alley right there that goes from Clifford Sims Boulevard to the Washington Rex Center. Think we can get somebody to clean that up before some of the kids go through there from Bridgeport and apartment complex and residents over there, they walk through that area right there to get to the gym.
We'll take a look at it, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ashburn?
Just a few things. Jim, the HESEAD rate study to determine the new water rates, where are we at on that statistic?
We have signed off on the task order and we have tasked them to do the job on there. Can you remember how many weeks it's said?
I don't remember the dates, but we did correspond and I'm waiting for them to send a data request so that I can start pushing information to them. But I can follow up with them and get that data request moving.
Yeah, I know we give them three months, so, okay, just checking up. Another thing, the Martin Luther King Downtown Revitalization, is there any way we can add that? And I guess it's up to you, Mayor, add that to the agenda for an update each time. And I wish Mr. Brewer was still here. Could you give us an hour update and maybe include that on the agendas?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, I can tell you what I do know about it. I did have a conversation with Department of Economic Opportunity. They are in the final stages of giving back the recommendation on there. Everything looks good, some understanding on there. I anticipate we should have something for you the next meeting, hopefully where you can, where you can move forward towards adoption.
And the next update, the dumpster on Reed. While we have people in town fixing patches, it'd be kind of nice to move that dumpster somewhere else, get those fixed. It is gone.
We sent, we sent a force to down there last week.
Okay. Then that is all I have, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Lawrence?
I'm good.
Mr. Hump?
The only thing I'd like to add is we should be supporting the Juneteenth celebration. I was able to go last year. I won't give away what I learned because I think if you'll go asking yourself, what is Juneteenth, you will be surprised to learn the history of why it's important to our community. So, if you have opportunity, I encourage you to attend. That's all I have.
All right. And I do the same thing on the Juneteenth. I've been able to attend every year they've had it, I'm pretty sure. How many years? This is the third year, is that right? And it is a good thing. I would like to see more of the citizens of the town support it because it means a lot to a lot of people. Ms. Shaw, I want to ask you a question. When do we do the changeover as far as Mayor Bezette taking over?
It will be the third Tuesday in June. I believe it's the eighteenth.
The third Tuesday?
Yes, sir. I will, there's a reception from eleven-thirty to twelve. The swearing-in will be at twelve and Judge McFarland has agreed to do the swearing-in.
Okay, great. All right. Other than that, that's all I have this time. I need a motion.
We got one.
Sorry. All right.